Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four. We call the meeting to order. The council agenda, any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, how many additions or corrections for you?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Dave to approve the agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, invocation, Faith Lutheran Church. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you guys. Pastor Dave from Faith Lutheran and uh, just wanna begin by sharing a verse from First Kings three. This is Solomon's Prayer. He says, "Your servant is in the midst of the people whom you have chosen, a great people so numerous that they cannot be numbered or counted. Give your servant therefore an understanding mind to govern your people, able to discern between good and evil. For who can govern this, your great people?" And so let us pray. Lord, I, we echo this prayer from Solomon. We pray, I pray, Lord, that you would give these public servants whom you've called um, wisdom uh, and understanding, an understanding mind to govern uh, these your people here in Hutchinson. I thank you for calling them, their willingness to serve, and now, Lord, as they discern tonight. Give them uh, guidance and um, uh, wisdom um, in um, making decisions. Give them harmony and um, Lord, may that spill over into our community. For we pray this in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Addition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? I do wanna just say that uh, if anybody has their, make time and go down to the Veteran Memorial Park and see the new uh, Gold Star Family Monument. Um, it uh, it's really, really nice. And uh, had a great turnout for the Memorial Day service, so thanks for everybody that uh, attended that. Uh, we do have a resolution underneath there. We have resolution number one, five, seven, three, six. Resolution accepting artwork donation from Dave Ding.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
That you, Pat?
Yeah.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat. Approve resolution number one, five, seven, three, six. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Citizens addressing the council, just please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Alright, approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of May fourteenth, two thousand twenty four, and strategic planning session of May fourteenth, two thousand twenty four.
Make a motion to approve them. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, A is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, three, seven. Resolution authorizing Minnesota Pollution Control Agency statewide organic management grant application. Uh, B is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, three, eight. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit for the tattoo establishment in a C three zoning district located at one forty Main Street North with favorable planning commission recommendation. Uh, C is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, three, nine. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of final plat- for second addition to the medals with favorable planning commission recommendation. Uh, D is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, four, zero. Resolution ad- adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of the final plat for Bonneville addition with favorable planning commission recommendation. Uh, E is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, four, one. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of preliminary plat for Ravenwood South second addition with favorable planning commission recommendation. Uh, F is approval of construction hour variance for Jefferson Street Roundabout Project. G is approval of Dairy Day Celebration on June seventh, two thousand twenty four in Library Square. Uh, H is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to Highland Lake Collective Club Incorporated at McLeod County Fairgrounds on June fourteenth and fifteenth, two thousand twenty four. I has approval of change order number one for water meter replacement project phase one, letting number two, project number twenty four dash oh eight. J is approval of re- of uh, elementary lease agreement. And K is claims appropriation and contract payments.
Motion approve agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve. Present agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay, motion carries. Uh, communications request petitions. We have presentation of City of Hutchinson, two thousand three twenty-three year-end reports.
Yeah, Mayor Council, I don't necessarily have a whole lot, just wanted to introduce um, the fact that this is our third annual um, annual report in regards to the city. It's kind of a collection of uh, year-end reports for each and every one of the departments. Um, just wanna be able to present it, and hopefully it contains the information you're looking for. Always, always open for suggestions on if we're missing anything, or if you'd like to see any additional information to be included, but just wanted to let the council and the public that this will be included on our website here, but it's, I think it's a good resource to kind of pull together everything that's took place within the, the past year.
That's it for me.
I had all the information that I wanted.
Need a motion to?
Nope, just it was, it's just a communication piece, so.
Okay, Harry. Uh, no unfinished business. Under new business, uh, stormwater wastewater and community resiliency project final report, nor Mr. Paulson.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. For you tonight is the final report from the north half study area for the stormwater wastewater community resilience planning project. Uh, the city's been working with S E H Consulting uh, for about the last year. Um, pulling the information together, reviewing our city infrastructure to make sure all that data was accurate. Um, ultimately to go into a model. So what was modeled was the north half of the community. Uh, the modeling included looking at existing conditions, also looked at, looked at potential climate projections as well. Um, information that was gleaned from the University of Minnesota Climate Protector, Climate Action Partnership. Um, that information basically was all coalesced and put into a model. That model then projected two ten and hundred year storm events. That information was ultimately intended to identify areas that are problematic within the community, uh, within the study area in the community. So the area on the map that you see surrounded by red is ultimately the study area. That study area included looking at all our ponds, pipe catch basins, manholes, basically everything that part of our storm sewer system that conveys water from our backyards, front yards, streets, ultimately to the lake and the river. Um, all the areas that were looked at uh, included a number of different things uh, from areas that were problematic, that were basically minor, major, everything in between. And ultimately, the goal was to identify project areas that could actually help to alleviate localized flooding within those areas. Um, once again, like I said, we looked at two ten and hundred year events. Those are pretty common thresholds when identifying stormwater modeling. Uh, we look at a two-year event that's much more common, something that happens annually or every other year at a minimum. Uh, it's about a two and a half inch rainfall over a twenty-four hour period. Some years we get more of those, but it's a basically a climate or a uh, stormwater projection based on statistical data. That's where they base the two ten and hundred year events. That information um, returns information within the model. So this is how bad it is. It's a two-year rain event. This size rain event produces flooding in these areas. Ten-year, obviously, is gonna be a larger rain event. It's gonna be more pronounced. Hundred-year rain event, which is kind of the extreme event. Um, those areas are obviously much more visible, noticeable within the model. Bunch of pretty purples and pinks and things that we don't like to see certainly on a two and ten-year event. Hundred-year event certainly shows where the worst of the worst is. Um, another thing that's important to note is we only studied areas where we know we have storm sewer infrastructure in place. For example, the golf course. Um, that's information that's available only to the golf course. They have private tiles and things within the golf course area. Or areas just outside of our drainage area, outside the red box essentially, that we can't model, just because we don't have any data. Um, what they do is they project that rain event over the entire area. It drops two and a half inches of rain over a twenty-four hour period, and this is what the model returns is these problem areas. So we can look at it that way, without having drainage area to convey that water away. We don't know where those problems areas, because we don't know where the actual storm sewer infrastructure on those private properties are. We do know is where all of our stormwater infrastructure that the city owns and operates is, things that are part of our map. Those important component of this was to actually review our entire system, every bit of data, every invert of every catch basin was looked at. If there was missing data, we found, we went out and collected that data and filled the gap. We needed that complete data set to be able to truly assess and analyze how productive and how efficient our system is operating. So through that whole process, it produced seven essential projects that we can look at, consider in future years as far as implementing. That can be done a number of different ways. If it's a really, really big issue, something that we need, okay, that prompts, we should move that up higher on the list. We should do something like that sooner than later. That's something that we have not done yet. We're finalizing the report. Um, the data is included as far as those seven potential project areas. We looked at what the existing conditions are, existing conditions with those climate projections. And then we also looked at, if we implement improvements within those areas, what type of improvement will we actually see relative to the model? So we can see an area that goes from purple to pink, we know that putting in a pond in that area is gonna help alleviate flooding to such and such a degree. Similar type of work was done down by the rec center a few years back when we did the Linden Park ponds. That whole area was modeled around the rec center specifically to understand, okay, what type of improvement, how big of a basin, how big of an improvement will it actually provide to that area? So similar type of process, just on a much larger scale. Um, once we broke it down, those seven projects that were produced as part of this included things from the far southeast all the way up to the northwest. Um, I'll give you a snapshot, kind of what some of those project areas look like here. Number of maps within the final report. Like I said, two, ten, hundred-year, climate-adjusted, existing conditions, um, areas of interest and concern, um, specific areas that are important. Primary corridors, thoroughfares for like emergency response. We don't want areas like that flooding. Um, those are primary areas for um, emergency responders to get around the community. Map on the screen, as you'll see, basically has all these little green boxes. Little green boxes were area based on the modeled returns. Areas that have some significant flooding during large events. Um, we then started looking at potential solutions within those areas. Some of those solutions might consist of basically putting in a larger pipe and creating an outlet to the river. We don't have private property or public property that's not being utilized for something where a pond could potentially go in place. That's really our only option. Otherwise, we're putting things underground underneath the street right away. It gets to be very expensive very fast. Um, so we looked at anything from upsizing a pipe, creating a new outlet, to putting in ponding in areas where it makes sense. Um, some of those areas made more sense than others, the amount of benefit that it provided, and the amount of improvement that was seen after the modeling. But basically, we focused in on those seven worst areas, started looking at projects to implement within those areas, and like I said, the amount of improvement that they would each provide. Also included with that is as part of this cost assessment in today's dollars, looking forward now. Those can take lots of different shapes. Um, project could be implemented as an existing project that's in our five-year C I P already, a huge sort, like a street utility improvement. Um, if we have one that's nearby, that might be a good time to look at implementing or incorporating a project like this into a project like that. Um, otherwise, some of these, yeah, we're gonna have to look at them on a standalone. Some of them are already included within our five-year C I P. For example, Michigan Street, we've known that there's an area along Michigan Street where there's an opportunity for stormwater pond. It already floods. Um, we, there's, it's not impacting any properties, but if it's an area that already flooded, and that water already goes to, is there a way that we can convey more water from an area that's problematic? Primarily, for example, east of Michigan, um, Industrial Boulevard heading south of the utilities building. I've seen that a number of times where that is full. I mean, the street over the curb, the parking lot at Hutchinson Utilities is full of water. Not a good thing, not what we wanna see. Um, is there an improvement that can be made in that Michigan Street area that would help alleviate issues like that? Um, it might not fix it. Um, certainly, we're gonna see large events. That's the end, the end of days. Uh, rain events, they're gonna, they're gonna keep coming. Seems like they're gonna come bigger and better than they've been. Now granted, we have had a few good years here where we haven't had as many issues. Um, but certainly, yes, um, we anticipate that, yeah, large events are here to stay, and we're gonna see more of them eventually, certainly. So identifying those areas, including those in a, in a capital improvement plan, some of those we might not be able even fund in a five-year plan. Um, but certainly things that we are aware of, that there's problems that persist in those areas. A lot of these included areas that were identified within the community by the public. Most of them we already knew about. Where there's backyard flooding, street flooding out in front of a home. So that information, this, this whole project included the collection of that information from the community, from city staff. Um, to try to say, right-size the model. These are areas where the model says it's a problem, and yes, there is a problem there. We've seen it, we've put eyes on it, we've probably got documentation of it already. The model confirms that. There were a few that we didn't anticipate were gonna be as prominent as they were. California Street, School Road, a couple of those were kind of like, oh. We knew there was some surcharging in the street during larger events. We just didn't realize it was as pronounced as it was. According to the model, certainly, we haven't seen that hundred-year rain event, but if we were to see that, there could potentially be damage to city infrastructure. There could be flooding in the yards, certainly. Um, those types of areas were of prominent concern. If we can find an appropriate solution, get it in a plan, and then look towards figuring out a way to design and build it, um, to help alleviate those issues in those areas. So, um, number of areas, number of projects, big price tag, certainly. I know I'm kind of varying the lead on this one. Um, but it never fails near the, I think it's the second to last page of the report is actually the cost estimate for the different projects. Um, seven, there's seven of them. There's a seven A and a seven B. Um, they're very closely related projects. Um, one is basically building on top of the other one, um, to expand its benefit. But ultimately, each one of these projects carries a price tag of uh, a million plus. There's a few that are smaller, just because they're not as extensive. Um, it's either a smaller basin or a smaller segment of pipe. Um, so there's a couple of them. I think it's project five is about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's probably one of the cheaper ones, but there's some that are three million, two million. Um, big projects, but like I said, these are in areas that are completely built out in the community. It's not new development. Trying to put a pond in an area that's got building all around it, makes it a lot more difficult to do. Much more expensive too, um, just because you have to look at it differently. You have to, yeah, now you have property acquisition, you're purchasing easements. Um, you're putting these things in the areas that weren't originally intended to have a pond. So those considerations also went into the development of these cost estimates as well. Um, with that, that's worth noting. Um, next Tuesday, we're having an open house for the community. I'm gonna make mention of that as well. Um, it's an opportunity for people in the public to come see the plan, ask questions, engage with staff about the plan itself. Um, that's something that we're planning to have here next Tuesday night from five to seven. Um, if you know of anyone, or if anyone's expressed any interest in this plan along the way, by all means, please feel free to share that information with them and send them our way. Otherwise, information's gonna go out tomorrow on our Facebook page and our website as well regarding that open house.
Um, federal funding or state funding for any of these?
Great question, Pat. Uh, yes, there is. So this year, with the resilient, this is called the S W C Stormwater Wastewater Community Resiliency Planning Grant. This year, for the first time, the P C As were leased basically a counterpart to this planning grant. It's actually called an implementation grant. We didn't have a final report. We weren't even far enough along to really understand what the cost estimates of these projects would be. But yes, there is funding, and more funding will come available later this year as well. So that's also something for us to wrap our heads around. Is there a number one or a number two on this list that seem viable? There's a limited amount of funding. When I say limited, it's statewide, but to the tune of thirty, forty million? Um, yeah, that can go a long way in a community like Hutchinson, but you spread that all over hundreds of communities across the state. The city of Minneapolis could probably gobble all of that up on their own. Uh, so these types of things, yes, there is implementation funding. It's great to see that the P C A followed up their planning grants with some implementation grants as well. So yes, there is opportunity later this year, and I believe also next year, there's funds from the I I J A that was allocated to the state. State to the P C A. P C A is now using this funding from the I I J A to support these types of activities. So yes, there will be some funding. There will also be other opportunities. Watershed-based implementation funds should also be coming available here this year. New source of funding through the One Watershed One Plan, planning effort that was done in McLeod County and across the South Fork Crow River. So that's a more limited amount of funding, I believe to the tune of what, six, seven hundred thousand dollars by annually? So there will be funding there as well to potentially help at least he- help with some of these projects, but in any event, yes, there's new sources of funding. Um, thank God for that. Uh, we, so we have a little relief there. Hopefully, we can get our hands on some of that to make some of these come to fruition. But in any event, yeah, there's plenty of work on, in front of us. Um, it's also worth noting, we're also beginning right after this project, the beginning of the South Half Study. So we also received planning grants from the P C A to complete the rest of the community as well. So more to come on that front. So, any questions?
So Council, if you're looking at your package, it's P, page three thirty-six. That's the, you know, if you were to do everything tomorrow, it'd be over seventeen million dollars.
Let's hold off.
I mean, ideally, John, based off of the area that we looked at, like you said, there's not really any ponds, so it's probably gonna become part of street projects. As we go in, and I mean, I think from, and Johnny Greg Maron, from a council standpoint, I don't know how many of these will be standalone. Hey, we're just gonna deal with stormwater in this area. It's probably likely gonna be connected to a, a street project of some sort. There may be aspects of this where we can go and address X, Y, or Z, but just looking at this, where the projects were laid out, it'll probably be something we're doing, when we're doing this street, okay, we know we need to up, upgrade the, the storm to whatever that is.
A, a great example that Matt is to the east, um, hilltop neighborhood, um, that's been prone to flooding in the past. Um, looking at like the Hutch Utility Substation Project, there's opportunity to potentially expand that pond. Well, we could potentially expand it even further if there's benefit relative to a project like this and connecting to another set storm sewer main that extends to Michigan, Michigan, and then farther to the west of that area that I was explaining floods already. Um, we could pair that hilltop project with something like that, because if we're gonna be addressing the drainage in that area, that water needs somewhere to go. Um, we've done phased approaches. Like I said, Linden Park is a great example of that, where we built it over a number of years. Sometimes it's just too much to bite off all at once. Uh, trying to do it all at one time is just too invasive, um, too expensive. There's a number of different reasons why we phase these projects when we can. Um, but in some instances, yes, it makes a ton of sense to do them with us. It's like Matt said, a street improvement project, something that we already have on the books. We might just have to expand the scope to include something like one of these improvements.
And you said there was really only one. I mean, most of this we're, doesn't catch us by surprise. You said the only one was probably California, um, School Road area?
Correct, yeah. Um, we've been tracking drainage, drainage issues flooding within the community since I've been here. Prior to me, um, I've multiple maps were included, as this is points of reference where we've seen flooding in the past. Um, but yeah, looking at areas where there is potential, there's enough open space to actually include a ponding of some sort to offset or to to let that water go to, store temporarily until it can be conveyed out of the system. Um, there's one primarily that's over on Highway seven west. Um, otherwise, yeah, most of them are kind of just pipe extensions, um, trying to improve drainage by getting water to a pond that already exists. Um, the other pond, the prominent one, is the one over behind Viking Coke, um, in that area west of Michigan. That one still has marginal benefit. Certainly, if we provide a larger outlet from the hilltop area west of the industrial park, that water has to go somewhere. If it doesn't go to a pond that's existing, maybe, maybe it can go to an existing pond, but that pond's already overloaded. Well, then we either need to provide a secondary outlet to the, to the river directly, or give it another pond to discharge to that's not overloaded. Hence the purpose of looking at adding another pond in that vicinity. There's multiple benefits to doing these things. One is to control drainage and flooding in those areas, but there's also water quality benefits and habitat benefits. Um, all those things are important to consider, that if we can kind of get, you know, a double benefit or triple benefit by doing these things, you're not just addressing one issue, you're actually improving on a couple others as well, generally.
Yeah, John, I think your, your notation of the Linden Park is probably the perfect example for those of us that, I mean, I've only been there twenty years, but I think how much of that area used to flood and I mean, I don't know if we've had, I mean, we've had some decent rainfall. I, I can't say I've seen anything like it used to be in that.
Nope, I haven't seen self-grade, I haven't seen self-grade with water on it since that pond's been completely put online with the Sunset Project, the, the last of the phases. Granted, we haven't seen a seven-inch soaker either.
Yeah.
But I, I'm, I hate to say it, I'm waiting for the day.
With that. Those of us remember when the pool flowed.
I was just gonna mention that.
Well, and things like that move the needle. Certain, there's no reason, there's no doubt about it. We identify those areas that are a huge problem, or we receive a lot of complaints. We, we can respond to it, but really, all you can do is wait. If it's not a plugged pipe or an issue with the infrastructure, you just have to wait for that system downstream to clear before that system will catch up. Um, you feel helpless. I get it, you know, people with flooded backyards or water in their storage sheds and those types of things, you feel helpless. Why, why can't somebody do something? Well, because as you see, these are, a lot of these are three, four, five million dollar improvements. They're just not easy fixes. It's not about, just put three more catch basins and that'll fix the problem. No, it's just because the, the the storm events we're seeing are larger, higher intensity. Um, those types of things or systems are designed typically to a ten-year storm event. That addresses ninety-five percent of every storm we'll ever see. Not a problem. Well, when we start seeing the fifty-year events and those types, that's when we see surcharging in a lot of those areas. So, um, the modeling helps a ton with that. Not all of it's new information. This is information that we knew. This confirms a lot of that scientifically. Um, it also provides us the opportunity to also look at, if we do X, Y will happen. Um, this is the amount of improvement you can expect by doing these types of things, which is certainly a value to the, to us for planning, for implementation, and also for budgeting as well.
Anything else for John? Thanks, John.
And I would just, and I would say this is another one of those plugs of city on purpose. You know, I wanna highlight that. I mean, some people may ask, why do we spend the money for the planning? Like I said, it's, it's to help us out, not just next week or next year, it's help us out five, ten, fifteen, twenty, fifty years from now.
Well, real, really, you know, if we didn't have the ponds that we put in now, John, this thing, what, what problems would we have? I mean, there's a lot, you know, if you, when we do have a big rain event, let's go around and look at some of the ponds. I mean, they're, they're full.
I know communities not far from here that started putting in ponds ten, fifteen years ago. We've been putting them in for thirty. Well, they're dealing with a lot more pronounced flooding impacts to private properties and apartment buildings not far from here. That, they, they kind of just threw their hands in there, like, what do we do? And beg, beg for mercy. Um, and they, they did get their hands on the same planning grant funds for doing the same work. Well, fortunately, we got seventeen million dollars worth of project. We're in a town like that, they might have fifty million dollars worth of improvements necessary, so. Painful, yes, over time, you know, it's, it's costs money. It impacts certainly our bottom line and how we do our work here, but um, the juice is worth the squeeze, no doubt, um, as far as protecting.
John, how many, how many ponds do we have in?
We currently operate over fifty city-owned or operated ponds. There's over a hundred and thirty public and private ponds within the community. And most of them are above ground wet ponds, but we do have some dry, we do have a couple dry ones. We have a couple underground ones and some uh, rain garden infiltration basins as well. So a little bit of mixed bag of everything.
Harry.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John. Moving on, uh, amending city policy number three point two seven.
Oh, hey, we do need to take action to approve that final report, so.
I'll make a motion to approve that report.
Thanks for catching us.
Excuse me, second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the report. Any other discussion? Home in favor, say aye. Full say nay. Motion carries. All right, going, moving on. Kelly, uh, amending city policy number three point two seven. Sick vacation leave donation.
Yes, evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so this is an existing policy, um, that was most recently updated, I think in twenty twenty-one. To, um, include leave donation for funerals. Um, what I have in front of you is really an expansion of the policy for reasons it can be utilized. Um, and that came about based on, um, the increase of the accruals that we've given for employees for vacation. Um, and based on the employee survey, benefit survey that we did in twenty twenty-three, where there was an interest in. Uh, more or better opportunities for paid parenting leave. Uh, so this is kind of, um, a bridge, um, to allow leave donation for people to use for additional reasons. Including parenting leave, um, until we get to that twenty twenty-six mark, when the Minnesota paid leave goes into effect, which includes the parenting leave. Um, once we know a little bit more about that, we'll have the opportunity to adjust this policy again. But really, it's expanding the reasons you can use it, expanding how much somebody can request. Um, and expanding how much somebody can give to somebody in need. Um, all of the leave that would be donated is already, um, accrued leave. Um, so it wouldn't include any additional budgetary issues. Um, and really it comes down to whether people are willing to give. Um, and so really a lot of the conversations that we had where most of the time people give information about why they need to utilize it. Um, and then that helps other employees determine, is this a, a, a cause that I'm willing to give my leave to? Uh, so it really comes down to that. So really this policy adjustment is just giving them kind of broader means for people to be able to use it for different reasons. But ultimately comes down to whether people are willing to give. So any questions?
Council, I'll just know, you know, I've been here now nine years and I think there's probably been three or four requests in that nine years from employees. And I would say we've got a generous staff and usually it's. A long-term medical case, somebody maybe who's got cancer or something. And so that's usually where, and this has fallen into place. Um, you know, there was some discussion about expanding the need for that and that's really what this policy does. But just if you're kind of wondering, okay, how often does it happen? You know, maybe once every two years, I would say seems. The average, so.
Hasn't been a lot. I've had one since I've been on board. This, you know, expanding this would likely increase the number of requests that we would get to utilize it. Um, but we do have, one of the, one of the adjustments to the policy really defines how much leave somebody can request. Um, to be utilized. And when it comes to that parenting one, which is an area I think we'll see obviously an increase on requests for. Um, we're limiting that at this point. Um, we can always revisit that, really depending on what that looks like. But, um, we do limit that. So I think there'll be an increase in the requests to utilize this policy or, or to, um, submit requests. But I, I don't think it's going to be, um, you know, huge.
What, by limiting what, how much time for like parent requ- parent parental leave?
Um, so we would allow up to, um, I think it's a month, four weeks of time, um, that somebody could request. The caveat is they have to exhaust all of their own leave, uh, before they can request donated leave. Um, we felt like that was a good intermediate step from going, you know, from no. You can't request any leave right now for any parenting leave. You gotta use what you've got. Um, versus going all the way up to the, the twelve weeks of time that you can take off unpaid. Uh, we thought giving that, that opportunity for an additional month would be helpful. Um, the important note in here though, is that it does indicate there's a little bit, um, of a little more support for. Um, the i- if a woman gives birth, um, that is her own medical condition that would count separately. Um, from the Parenting Leave Act, which also allows for bonding, which is a Minnesota state law. So. Yeah.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? Home in favor, say aye. Full say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kelly. Uh, setting council workshop for July ninth, two thousand twenty-four at four thirty P M. To review two thousand twenty-three audit report.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, the staff is currently working on finalizing our audit work for twenty twenty-three. And so prior to the council formally accepting that audit, we usually have a workshop just before that meeting. So we're looking to schedule that at four thirty on July ninth.
Make a motion to set that meeting.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Pat. Any other discussion? Home in favor, say aye. Full say nay. Motion carries. Governance, uh, minutes reports from committees, boards, or commissions. We have City of Hutchinson financial report and investment report for April two thousand twenty-four. And Hutchinson Housing Development Authority Board Minutes from April sixteen, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, Chief Giperson, you got anything for us?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just one noteworthy item, um, that you might be interested in. Uh, we just recently had our eleven month inspection by Contiguity Group and, um, Wold on our building. So we have just a small list, probably less than a dozen items. Um, nothing major. I mean, as simple as two screws missing out of some molding somewhere. So, um, hopefully we'll have that all taken care of and, uh, by the end of June. And, um, it'll be one year since we've been in our building and then everything else is on the company dime, I guess. Yeah, I would just say, uh. As far as Contiguity Group and Wold both are very meticulous about those types of things. So I'm thankful and grateful to them for picking up on them. That's all I got.
Chief, I see you got your vehicle.
Yes, uh, it has arrived, but, um, still is not running. We're waiting for parts. So when it was running, then you could have.
See your hands, have you been working on?
Just a little bit.
All right. Mike, you got anything for us?
Get a, just a quick update on the, on the street projects. Despite the weather, uh, we're making progress. Um, up on Michael Court, they finished the underground utility work, uh, today. And, um, starting tomorrow, they'll be on Oakland. So, um, uh, travel through there will be a little bit more difficult. Cemetery will still remain the same. Uh, that won't be impacted, uh, based on access, um, to date. But, uh, coming from the east will be, um, difficult as we trench into that. So expect a couple of weeks of underground work there and it's slow going just because of a lot of utility and a pretty narrow corridor. So, uh, but you've seen probably a lot of spot work along Franklin and Washington. That work's done well. Um, generally, um, complete, um, and then just waiting what now more for the resurfacing work and things to go. Once school is out, once, uh, the water carnival is complete here in mid-June. So, uh, but yeah, moving on pretty well despite the weather that we've had. And beyond that, just a reminder, uh, John Olson's, um, community, um, celebrations tomorrow night, three to seven P M at the VFW. So, um, certainly council members and, uh, guests are, are welcome at that and encouraged to attend.
So what time did you say it was?
Uh, three to seven P M, yeah.
Mike is, and I know it's county or whatever, state, the, uh, roundabout on South Jefferson. Have they started on that yet or?
They have, yeah. I'm, I'm glad you asked, um, Pat. We had just had a progress meeting today. They're in week, um, kind of two, two and a half, three. You've seen the variance tonight for the construction hours. Their intention really is not to work any Saturdays. Um, they're coming from, um, uh, the Monticello area. So they're about an hour and a half, two hours off town. So they do plan to work five pretty long days. Um, weather has slowed them some, but they, um, hope to actually have the subgrade work of the roundabout. Done within the next week, um, which is really good progress. And then again, part of the reason for that variance is to have most of the work done, other than restoration by the fair, August fifteenth. So they really are committed to, um, using these next, uh, ten weeks well.
And then do we have to finish, refreshment member? Do we finish from out to that?
We'll have, yeah, we've coordinated, uh, the Jefferson Street project. And then, um, in fall, you'll see a turnback agreement, um, in cooperation with the county where that will become, um, city, city street. Um, you'll see that, uh, likely as a fall action item. Um, but right now it's kind of an entirely coordinated project through the county, which will include a trail section that will get added also. Um, up to that roundabout, so.
Thanks.
Anything else for Mike? Thank you for that. Uh, do we have to do anything or because of? The meeting or not or?
Well, you're all gonna be there at the same time.
Well, I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
I, I guess I. Yeah, it's too late because you don't have enough notice to give that. Um, you know, the one thing you may want to have a conversation on is the open house next Tuesday. If you wanted to schedule that as a formal meeting, I don't know if, if more than three of you are planning on attending that. Um, I would just note, you know, it's a social gathering tomorrow. So I, I just don't want to see three of you talking about city business at the, at the meeting.
Noted.
All right. Kelly, you got anything else for us?
Okay. Um, today I sent this over to Matt, but today, um, in the League of Minnesota Cities, there was a thread, um, where an individual was asking for some guidance. Because the council was, um, there's a few members on their phones a lot. And so I just wanted to thank you all for being engaged, um, and present and focused while you're here. So thank you.
Sending text messages to hu- to community members during, uh, council, during council meetings.
So thank you, no. And so I just wanted to say thank you for being engaged.
I did look at my calendar a couple times.
John, you got anything else for us?
Everybody.
I figured you did, because you would have been out of here all the way.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Tallgrass weed notices started going out about a week and a half ago. Just giving you a heads up.
Saw a couple, Ben Lord.
Is that Nomo May? Is that a deal?
It's a deal, but I have not heard a whisper about it this year. Thought notices that were sent out, um, last year, we went through and developed an alternative landscaping plan. Um, I have not gotten any inquiries from anyone about that up to this point yet and no reference to Nomo May for the notices that have been sent thus far, so.
It is going about an inch every day, it seems like.
And we didn't have anybody register a plan for native, okay, so.
And certainly if we do get one of those, I'll point them directly to that process and we probably won't ever hear from them again. But in any event, just wanted to give you a heads up, notices have started going up. Thank you.
There's some long stuff out there.
Yeah.
Hello, when do the sheep come?
The goats.
The goats. I'll give an update. I've got an update for you.
Mark, you got anything for us?
I guess just one thing to echo Mike's comment before, uh, congratulations to John Olson on his retirement. Great coworker for the twenty-six years I've been connected to the city and willing to help anybody at any time it seemed like and wish him the best.
Mary, uh, Chad, let's start with you tonight.
So I had an E D A meeting last, last week, yeah, and, uh, nothing earth shattering to report. Um, Miles says I have a few companies looking to expand or a couple kicking tires and coming to town, but nothing imminent. Um, they only got one bid for the R F P, um, for the medical center site. So we have to see if that's gonna work out. And then the, uh, the hotel, the Journeison Hotel project is still going forward as far as it can right now. So otherwise, not much to report there. Um, and otherwise I didn't have anything.
Mary, did you catch any fish?
Caught seven rainbow trout over the weekend, so the boys were excited about that, so, yep.
I'm sure the kids caught them all and you didn't.
Actually, mom caught five of them, so. Starting around the campsite like a rooster.
All right, thanks. Uh, Tim.
I'll just reiterate the thanks for everybody who showed up at the Memorial Day, uh, event. Uh, it was greatly appreciated. And, uh, check out the library. They've got a lot of different, uh, people coming in, authors coming in throughout the summer. I know they just had the Wetter, uh, Wetterling, uh, in town and so there's so good things going on and informative. So continue on.
Steve.
Thank you. Uh, Mid-Minnesota Regional Transportation Coordination Council, which is called the M M R T C C, met today. Um, uh, uh, on Zoom. And I was notified and I didn't see it the paper myself, but, uh, they did have a, uh, ad in, uh. First week and second week of the, uh, new paper, this, the station. And it's called Connecting Non-Drivers Across Our Region. We live in a car-centered communities. Can, it can be frustrating when you can find yourself without transportation. I'm M M D C Mobility Manager Terry Smith. It's my job to help non-drivers connect with rides for medical appointments, social outings, and even weekly errands. If you need transportation, I'll work to connect you with a provider who can serve you. I can also connect drivers who want to serve their community as paid or volunteer drivers. You can go to M M R D C dot O R G, or you can call three two zero two three five eight five zero four. And I was in two weeks papers, but, uh, I didn't see it. I couldn't find it in last week's paper. But anyway, he said it was there and I took his word for that, but, uh, I just wanted to relate that. And, uh, I posted it on Real Life Hutch and my own feed, uh, so people and that includes, uh. Meeker, Red Valley, McLeod, and Wright Counties, those four counties. So he will set you up if he can get, get you there, so. Idea is to have transportation for any and all that needed, uh, one way or another, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Pat?
Uh, Public Arts, the, uh, sculpture stroll. Most of those were put in this week and I think there might be one or two that haven't been completed yet. But, you know, right along Main Street, you've got the Mickey Corner, Kitty Corner Cross, you've got Dairy Queen, uh, Library Square. There's one, uh, Citizens Bank, Post Office, and then from there goes, they're scattered out along the river. And, and, uh, so take a chance, look at the new ones. Um, every year is kind of fun to do that. And, uh, I was at the meeting with Chad, so I'll get what he said. Other than that, mosquitoes are out and about. I'm wondering if the truck could stall at six forty.
I think they started, they started last week or?
Yeah, they, about eleven is when I heard. Yeah, it was about eleven when they, I heard it there, but man, are they old.
Then, yeah, uh, I had a lot of people ask me, aren't they gonna spray mosquitoes? Yeah.
Bumper crop.
I, I told them, you know, here, if they don't believe that it helps in Hutch. Just go out of town a little bit and stand underneath the shade tree for about two seconds. All right, that it, Pat?
Thanks.
Matt?
Couple things, uh, the goats on the go, um, will be here this Saturday. So they actually put fence up today. They'll be starting at Robert Sparks, so they're planning on bringing goats in this, uh, this Saturday.
Curious to see that.
Yep, be interesting to see how that goes. Um, and then just a reminder that filing closes next Tuesday at five P M. So for the mayor's seat, seat three and seat four, so far we've only got.
Two excellent candidates.
Two candidates that have filed. One for Chad's seat and one for the mayor's seat and. Chad said they're excellent candidates.
Excellent, excellent candidates, sure, so far.
And he's a college graduate. That worries me.
Except the only other thing would be is if, if you think more than three of you will be at that open house, we should set that as a meeting. Uh, uh, next Tuesday, but I don't.
We won't stand by each other, so.
How's that? That sounds good. Otherwise, that's it for me, so.
All righty, uh, now I had the H R A meeting. We got, uh, we still have some openings at Park Towers for apartments. So if anybody's looking for apartments, there's openings up there.
Planning commission also. We need one fee, one seat.
Oh, that's right, so.
Since the last meeting, but I don't think it has.
Okay. Well, if anybody's interested in the planning commission, come and see Melissa and get a interest form. Um, the only, for, uh. On, uh, the housing side, uh, we had, uh, in April, we had, uh. Twenty-four new listings for houses in Hutch. We had. Twenty-four new listings for houses in Hutch. We had nineteen sales that closed in Hutch. Um, so there, there is some movement around, so. Um, and the medium sale price yet is about two forty-nine, so. There's houses out there, although, so. Um, otherwise, the airport commission, uh, we are still looking for FBO, but, uh. Mike's taking care of everything. Mike and Donovan are heading it up right now, so. We're just kind of keeping that going on out there, so. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Make a motion.
Motion by David, second by Chad to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.